I'll ask Councilman McAttee to lead us in the invocation and Councilman Greiner to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you, to lay our requests before you. Thank you that you're in control of our personal lives, you're in control of our city life, our state, and our nation. May what we do today be pleasing to you, may we seek your wisdom, and may we attempt to do the best that we can to meet the needs of our people and to take Oklahoma City in a direction that will be pleasing to you. We thank you for the blessings of the past and we look forward to your future blessings as we try to do your will. For it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If they would come forward, it is Red Cross Month, or it's about to be, assuming we get this thing handled. Nice to see you guys. We have a proclamation, and I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas March is designated as American Red Cross Month and it is observed as a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those who reach out to help their neighbors when they are in need. Whereas American Red Cross everyday heroes are on the front lines each day volunteering their time, giving blood, taking lifesaving courses, or providing financial donations to help those in need. Whereas we honor our heroes in Oklahoma City, all those who work tirelessly to help in times of disaster when someone needs lifesaving blood, or when the comfort of helping hand can ease someone's pain. Whereas when an injured service member is hospitalized far from home, the American Red Cross offers that comfort. When a hospital patient needs blood, the American Red Cross blood donors help them. When a lifeguard jumps in to save a drowning child, or someone steps up to help a heart attack victim, the American Red Cross is there. Whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies whenever and wherever they may occur. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim March 2014 as American Red Cross Month in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to the American Red Cross. Janine Bella is the CEO, Mark Williams is the board chair, and I'm sure there's some people you'd like to thank. I know that Red Cross relies on a lot of volunteer work.
Mayor, thank you, and council, thank you for this proclamation and helping bring awareness to the Red Cross, especially as we head into the next storm season. The response to last season was overwhelming from the citizens of Oklahoma City and our volunteers, and we want to thank them for that. We also want to thank our volunteers for getting prepared for this upcoming season and to make you prepared and aware of the storm season and to help keep you safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Let's show our appreciation one more time to the American Red Cross. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just mention that Mark Williams just received a statewide recognition from leadership Oklahoma for his work with the Red Cross, and very, very well deserved. Congratulations, Mark.
We have one more bit of business to handle this morning under the office of the mayor, and it's a resolution to honor one of our employees as the employee of the month. You can imagine when you have a city workforce of over 4,000 employees, to single out one is a difficult task, but it also is a very special honor. And I'll ask Jeremy Veitch from the Public Works Department to come forward. Jeremy, he's here with Eric Winger. Jeremy, congratulations. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Jeremy Veitch has been a city employee for three years and is a safety analyst in the Streets Traffic and Drainage Maintenance Division of the Public Works Department. Whereas Jeremy identifies and assesses safety training needs, analyzes statistical data, and evaluates long and short-term safety plans and programs. Whereas Jeremy has a genuine desire to promote and enhance a safety culture in the Public Works Department and has taken a proactive approach to help employees reduce the number of workplace injuries in the Streets Division by 50 percent from the prior year. The division was injury-free from September 1st through December 1st of 2013. Whereas Jeremy serves as the City Public Works Emergency Response Task Force Safety Officer and assists other jurisdictions following disastrous incidents. Whereas Jeremy is a member of the Central Oklahoma Incident Support Team, where he has served as the safety officer and the staging area manager and resource leader numerous times during wildfires. Whereas Jeremy is an advanced incident command systems instructor for Oklahoma Homeland Security and has instructed city employees on the subject. Whereas Jeremy is currently in graduate school, working on his Master's of Science degree in Emergency Service Management, and he recently became the first person in Oklahoma to complete the position-specific task book for Type III All-Hazards Incident Management Team Safety Officer. Whereas Jeremy has attended numerous fire service FEMA and safety certification training courses at night and on weekends to expand his knowledge to assist with unpredictable, dangerous, and sometimes catastrophic situations, and to minimize risk to responders and the public. Whereas his council desires to recognize Jeremy Veitch for his selfless service, dedication to his duties, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Jeremy Veitch, March 2014, South Oklahoma City Quanus Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation for Jeremy and all the work. And I want to hear from you, but first, we're going to vote on this. Is there a motion?
I don't think so.
And a second. Cast your votes. How about that? It passes unanimously. Jerry, congratulations, Jeremy.
I would like to thank you all for the humbling honor, Mayor and the council, and I appreciate the Public Works Department for all their support.
Jeremy, thank you. We really appreciate your work, doing your dedication to the city service. One more time for Jeremy Veitch. Would you guys please stand so we could acknowledge you and welcome to Oklahoma City? Had a chance to visit with them this morning, a very, very exciting group, and I've been able to see that part of Russia and see the Volga River that your city is located on. It's an incredible place. Yeah. Thank you all. Also, Councilman McAttee's having a birthday this week, coming up on Thursday? Councilman White noted that he was going to be a little late today, and he had one item that he wanted us to hold if he wasn't here yet, so we'll, when we get to that, it's under Item 8. We're under Item 3 on the council agenda for the office of the mayor. We voted on Item 3A. On Item 4, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. I'll look for a motion on Item 4A to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for February 25th, and then Item 4B to approve the Journal for February 11th and 18th.
Move to Item 7.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And then Item 5 is request for uncontested continuances.
Mr. Mayor, a couple, on page 9, under Item 8, A3, S.P.U.D. 729, I believe that's in Ward 7, the applicant is requesting that this item be deferred until April 8th. Again, that's Item 8, A3. And then on page 10, under 8, F1, Item I, 5216, southeast 85th. We ask that be stricken. The owner has secured that item. And then on to page 11, under Item 8, G, AG is an assessment district up north of 63rd Street, and the applicant is requesting that that be deferred until April 1st.
Which one was that?
8G.
April 1st. All right. Any other requests for uncontested continuances? Or recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority? Looks like there are five items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, two items.
Move to Item 2.
All right. Comments or questions here? All right. Cast your votes on the PPA. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, three items.
Move to Item 2.
Comments or questions on the PPA? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Adjourn the OC-PPA and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. All right. Are there any individual considerations?
I've got a couple of minor questions I'd like to ask.
Okay.
On N, O, and S.
Okay.
R.
R? Okay. Pat, you want to go ahead and get started?
Thank you, your honor. N1 and N2 are similar in that somebody is granting an easement to the Waters Utilities Trust. I take that was the city granting that easement? Is that correct?
Yes.
How come we go through the process of granting an easement from one city operation to another city operation?
I'm not sure the specifics of that. Maybe Eric or Marcia can answer that for me.
Okay. On Item O, this covers lease agreement with COPTA for the new Santa Fe Terminal Railroad Depot. Will Amtrak continue to operate out of there after COPTA takes over?
Yes.
So they have an agreement between COPTA and Amtrak, or we just assumed the agreement that had?
We assumed two or three agreements at the time we acquired the facility. One of those is for the retail establishments there, one of them's for the Amtrak operation. There's one or two others. I think Mr. Jordan can answer the question on the easement.
Mr. Keith, can I?
Mr. Keith may answer that.
Mayor and council members, in order to keep our business operations straight, as you know, when an easement is granted, the easement holder has superior rights to the fee title owner for the purpose of that operation. So when we have city property or some other property held in the city's name, and we have a need for it, for say, a water or sewer line, we need to preserve that space on the property for those purposes. If we don't specifically grant utilities trusts, for example, an easement, then it gets lost in the tracking. On occasion, the city transfers property, grants rights to other easement holders, and when they grant rights to other easement holders, such as maybe OGN E, then those rights become superior to the fee title holder, and the rights of the water line and the operation of the water line are then subordinated, excuse me, subordinated to that subsequent easement because we have no easement. So for that reason, both for tracking and for efficiency of operations, we grant rights for those functions, make sure that those rights are preserved.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ed, Item R?
Excuse me.
Okay. I thought you were finished, Pat.
I have one other, Item S.
Okay.
This is a resolution reimbursing some employees whose personal information was published by the Journal Record inadvertently, I guess.
Yes.
Are we asking the Journal Record to pay for anything?
We haven't. It's a small amount.
I understand, but the principle of the thing is not the money that's involved.
It was an unfortunate situation that happened, and we think it's the right thing to do for our employees.
Well, I think it is too, but I think we ought to ask the Journal Record to pay for it, just to get their attention. Just like I say, it's not much money, but it's the right thing to do.
Okay. We'll make that request.
But just so I understand what Pat said, so they just took a photograph of documents that were floating around, or?
Well, they weren't floating around at that point. The basement had been dewatered at that point in time, but they took a picture of all the damage, and it ended up being a close-up that was able to identify some employees and some social security members.
And the Journal Record published it?
Yes.
It seems like at least a conversation with the editors maybe might be reasonable, but on R, can you, can somebody explain what this involves? This is a million-dollar contract for architectural services?
That's correct.
For the first senior wellness center?
That's correct.
And at this specific location?
Yes.
So we've committed to this location being the first location, or?
Well, I think it was the direction that came out of the workshop. We have a memorandum of understanding with them that was approved by the MAPS Subcommittee in the MAPS Oversight Board last week, which will be brought back, which will be brought to this body on March 18th. We're shooting for March 18th on that, and we're in negotiations with North Care for the second facility right now. We're not that far behind on that one, so.
So Putnam City Baptist has been decided to be the first one?
Well, we were given direction to go actually do three of them. The one dropped out, and so we're now going for those two.
I thought we were going to negotiate a contract and then look at the contract and then decide as a body what the contracts look like. Is that, we've decided Putnam City Baptist Church is first?
I thought we were directed to go and negotiate with two of them and go forward, which is what we're doing. Yes, that one was further along and able to go.
Right. And we're currently behind as far as the implementation plan on that first one, and the second one is slated to start right now, so this actually puts us back on schedule. As Mr. Katz said, we're negotiating with North Care, and we hope to have an agreement, what we're calling the binding term sheet, next month through the Subcommittee system and on up to.
The contract with Putnam City Baptist Church has been negotiated?
It's not necessary.
We have a term sheet that we've come to agreement to, which sets out all the basic business terms and responsibilities. It's similar to what we did, I think, on the Thunder deal, where we came back and approved a memorandum of understanding that outlined the business terms, and then it would take a couple of more months to fill out the specific details.
But here, we're committing a million dollars for architectural design, so it sounds like that we've committed. We're okay with the contract and?
The business terms, again, the business term MOU will be to the council on the 18th. Do you prefer to hold up and do this on the 18th?
I would. I mean, I don't know why you would commit a million dollars if the council has a problem with the contract, but... And the second question would be, this is a $10 million project? Twelve, so 10 percent, would that be, it seems high maybe for architectural services?
No, that's pretty much what we've seen on projects like this. It's a bit specialized because there's additional consultants for pool and some of the facilities that will be inside the Wellness Center.
Okay.
Ed, do you want to make a motion to pull that item off the consent docket and vote on separately?
Is it going to cause any problems with bringing this back at the same time with the, you don't think so?
It won't cause us any problems.
Okay. I don't have any problems.
Sure. I'll move it, to pull this to the 18th.
What, to defer it for two weeks?
Defer it to?
All agree to the same.
On the 18th?
Okay. We have a motion, a second, on the, we'll be voting, actually, I guess this is Item R, we'd be voting on separately. Any other comments or questions on R?
Let's make one thing clear. This is not with Putnam City Baptist Church.
That's correct.
This is with a nonprofit organization.
Okay.
So let's be very clear about that, and this has been totally vetted, so I'm going to move, I'm going to vote to move this ahead forward. I think it just sends a bad signal to keep the way in it.
Fair enough. All right. The motion is to defer for two weeks, Item R. Cast your votes. And the deferral passes five to three. The rest of the consent docket now has been moved and seconded. We ready to vote on the rest of the consent docket? All right. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. We're on to the concurrence docket. Just one item here. Comments or questions here on Item 7A?
Questions, sir? How can it pass five, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7?
I showed Ms. Simak as being absent.
Sorry.
Ms. Sager, I'm sorry. Back to the board, Sid. There were two absent.
We have a motion on Item 7.
Move to item 8.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8 begins a series of zoning cases, neither items that require a separate vote. Item 8A1 is a zoning case in Ward 1. The address is 11820 West Hefner Road. It's currently R1 Single Family Residential and Double-A Agricultural, and it would become an R1 Single Family Residential District. James?
Yeah, this is just consolidating an area for residential development. They've already submitted a preliminary plat. Planning Commission approved it. It's completely compatible for the surrounding areas, so unless anybody has any questions, I move for approval.
All right. Comments or questions on Item 8A1? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A2 is a zoning case in Ward 4, and this is the one that Councilman White asked us to hold until he could get here, so we just set that aside. We don't need to vote to move it further down the line, and I know we have one person that has signed up to speak, so we're intending to wait for Councilman White's arrival. We'll move on to Item 8A3, which is a zoning case in Ward 7 at 1415 Northeast 63rd Street, until April 8th. Okay. At the beginning of the meeting, we deferred Item 8A3. The new date for that one is April 8th. On Item 8A4, a zoning case in Ward 7 at 14000 North I-35, it's currently CHC Highway Commercial District, and it would become a new simplified planning and development. John?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak? Is the applicant present? Okay. Can you briefly tell us what you're trying to do here?
We're currently taking a highway commercial district and rezoning it to a single-use spud for a mini-storage facility that passed at Planning Commission. We're not asking for any signage. We took the signage off of the water tower. There's no existing water to the site. I would ask that we amend the spud for the roof pitch, and I've discussed this with staff. There's two, there are two buildings that front the highway frontage that, we currently have in the spud, a 2 to 12 or 6 to 12 pitch on the roofs, and we would leave these two buildings at front, the frontage road. Is that okay? But we're asking, and this is a picture of the frontage, and I know this is in your packet, but these two buildings that are front, we would remain with that pitch, but we're asking for a half to 12 on the remainder of the buildings because of cost reasons, and you won't be able to see that roof, so that's the amendment I ask.
Bob, you have any problems with that?
We don't really have any objection. We'd like him to submit an elevation, just so we'll know what they're supposed to look like. To be included in the document.
Would I be in order to move with technical assistance from planning staff so it can cover whatever remaining issues?
Yeah, that's the only change. He's agreed to the technical evaluation, so we just need to vote on an amendment to allow the change on the pitch of the roof from a 212 to a 6-inch 12, or a half?
It's a half to 12 on the remainder of the building besides the two that are front, I-35 service.
So I would need to do two motions, correct? Okay. I move for approval. Okay. First amendment, thank you. I move to amend the spud.
All right. All right. Cast your votes. The amendment passes unanimously.
I move for approval.
Cast your votes, and the item passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you.
Item 8B is an intention to close a couple of 30-foot plats. It's in Ward 1. James, you okay with this?
Yeah, I am. Has anybody signed up? Okay. Yeah, staff and Planning Commission recommended approval, and so I do too.
Okay. Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8C is a request for a special permit for a personal storage unit. This one's in Ward 8. Pat?
Thank you, your honor. Is the applicant here? A representative of the applicant? Well, this is a typical self-storage project, and I would urge them to make it as attractive as possible because it seems like that the complaints we get about these are their appearance is not up to par. And so as you develop your project, I think you ought to try to keep that in mind. I know the owners are architects, so perhaps it won't be too hard to spell them, but other than that, has anybody signed up on this one? Well, I think, absent of the cautionary statement that we need to be conscious of appearance, I would move for approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes on Item 8C. It passed unanimously.
Thank you, John.
Item 8D is an item that's been to the council a couple of times before, so we're voting for the final hearing today. This is the item that MT Berry introduced to us a few meetings back.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions today on Item 8D? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And Item 8E is an ordinance to be introduced. This is a Ward 7 issue, has to do with the vacation of an alley. I think this has something to do with the GE facility. John?
I move.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Please, we request the emergency on that.
All right. John, they're asking for the emergency on Item 8E.
I move.
Cast your votes. The emergency passes 8-0. On Item 8F, this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8F? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is this person here for?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Kelly Parker?
Hi.
Hi. Oh, that's you.
It's in regards to the property on F1B, 1926 Northwest 22nd Street. I'm Kelly Parker. I'm representing the mortgage holder, City Mortgage, on this property. Once City Mortgage received the notice of violation, they did identify that the property was vacant. They have stepped in, winterized the property on the interior. They have secured some of the doors, to my understanding. They are currently working on getting bids for repairs to the roof, trash removal, and the only thing I'm not aware of is the status of the unsecured windows at this time. My client's asking for an extension of 60 days in order to get bids and the repairs made.
Well, is it the building in back that's the issue here, Charles? If we could back up those pictures?
Well, actually, what we show is the house and the detached garage. Both are unsecured.
Well, these pictures, it looks like they were taken on February 24th. Have repairs been made since then?
I did receive, I received some images from my client indicating that they've been in the house, winterized the property, and secured at least one door with a lock.
What are their plans to continue the work?
They do have, they are requesting bids right now on getting the repairs to the roof done and the debris removal. I'm not sure what the current status is on if there are any remaining doors or windows that need to be secured. If they do need to, they have, they will get bids and get the work completed.
All right. Meg?
I guess the question that we're being asked is whether or not we should secure it, or whether we should allow them to secure it?
Well, we can let them secure. They have approximately two weeks to get it done, which is plenty of time. I do want to make the council aware that the garage is an awarded contract on a demo. It's in bad shape. That's already been awarded. This is separate from?
So we've already declared the separate building?
Yes.
Has dilapidated, and the contract's been awarded for it to come down?
Yes.
So Kelly, is your client aware of that?
No, this is the first I've been notified of that.
Do we have record of communication between Kelly's client?
They never contacted us, but they've been contacted through the normal means, the notices. If they've got these, they got the, you know, if they got the notice for the unsecured, they've got the notice for the dilapidated also.
And we were planning to demolish within the next week or two? I mean, is it imminent, I assume?
It's been awarded. It usually takes anywhere from three to six weeks to secure the permits and?
Okay. Well, Kelly, I think we're behind the curve on the demolition of the separate structure.
Okay.
They'll need to contact us.
Yeah. If you'll get in touch with Charles's office, he'll meet with the outside. We need to- We need to coordinate the remainder of the securing of this property to make sure it's not a further hazard.
Yes.
Okey-dokey?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll leave it on.
Okay, you'll make a motion on item eight F to?
Yeah, I'd make a motion. Oh, I, I think I made a motion to approve.
All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight G has been deferred until April first. Item eight H is a public hearing that regards a street improvement district near Silver Creek, east of North Penn. Is there anyone here hoping to speak in this public hearing today on item eight H? All right, looks like we can move this one forward. How about a motion?
I move the item second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item eight I is also a Ward eight street improvement assessment district. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item eight I? All right, Pat, you want to make a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight J is a series of right-of-way use permits. The first is in Ward seven, the All Sports Association, in conjunction with the Big Twelve Women's Basketball Tournament, wants to hold the Women's Basketball Tournament Fan Fest this weekend, and it's like David Forster is here. David, you want to come up and tell us more about the event?
Good morning. Um, well, we are going to have the Big Twelve Women's Basketball Championship this weekend. In conjunction with that, we'll be having the Fan Fest Friday evening, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday night, so we'll need the street closed. For that time, we'll have inflatables and all that kind of good stuff.
All right. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks for coming down, David. And item eight J two is also a request from the All Sports Association. This would be the twenty-fourteen NCAA Wrestling Championship Fan Fest, March twentieth through the twenty-third. David?
Yes, same situation. We'll be having wrestling Thursday, the twentieth, through Saturday, the twenty-second. Student athletes will be practicing in the Cox and running over, and we'll have fans coming across the street, so for safety, we wanted to close the street down for those three days.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Thank you. And item eight J three is a request from the Oklahoma City County Health Department, Wellness Now Coalition, to hold Open Streets OKC. This is an event that would be in Ward two and Ward six, and Kristen Culver is here. Kristen?
Hi, I'm Kristen Culver. I am the supervisor of the Wellness Now Coalition at the Oklahoma City County Health Department, and I am the co-director of Open Streets OKC, along with Kate Brady of the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. Wellness Now, along with several coalition member organizations, including the YMCA, the Neighborhood Alliance of Central Oklahoma, the City of Oklahoma City, and the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, as well as Uptown Twenty-third Merchants Association, is planning Oklahoma's first large-scale open streets event. On March thirtieth, we're requesting to temporarily close Twenty-third Street from Robinson to Western to vehicle traffic so that people may use it for walking, jogging, cycling, dancing, skateboarding, and more. The idea is to create a safe public space in a car-free setting where communities can connect, families and friends can exercise and play, and businesses can engage the public. We have roughly forty participating organizations that are planning to provide activities along the route, and the event will be from noon until four P.M., but the street will be closed from ten A.M. until six P.M. to account for setup and cleanup.
All right.
This is a really wonderful event with so many collaborations. It looks like great fun. Thank you for working with so many partners to put it together.
Thank you.
I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes on item eight J three. It passed unanimously. Item eight K, understand we do not need executive session. Is there a motion?
No.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight L, understand we do not need executive session. All right?
We need to adopt the motion.
Okay, motion to adopt the resolution? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item eight M, understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to strike would be in order?
We can strike.
Okay, cast your votes. Item is struck from the agenda. And item eight N is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight N, claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. We have one item listed. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item ten is items from council. James, you want to get us started this morning? Ed, you have anything? Larry? All right. David? Meg?
Mayor, just really briefly, we talked a little bit this morning about the Santa Fei train station, and I think a couple of us have had an opportunity to see some video from Denver where they've just opened their intermodal transit hub, and it has absolutely caused the neighborhood around it to explode. Twelve or thirteen new restaurants opened, housing all around it, hundreds of thousands, or thousands of feet of new office space. I think the number is something like two or two and a half billion dollars' worth of development in the neighborhood right around this intermodal transit hub, so I think it bodes incredibly well for what's likely to happen around the Santa Fe Station here in Oklahoma City. It was really exciting to see. Thank you.
John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, you all will receive some information from me about Austin, Texas has a zero-waste plan, and again, zero-waste plan, so I think eventually, I think this council, we need to start talking about environmental issues and possibly looking into about going to a zero-waste city. Austin is a zero-waste city. Seattle and several other cities are moving towards being a zero-waste city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pat?
You know, just a couple of questions. When do we require subdivision bond? Is there a dollar limit associated with you, or just our?
At any time, there's public improvements associated thereof.
Okay, but we, we have some subdivisions where we don't require a bond.
I think, I guess I'd ask Bob, Tina to come back in, or Eric.
Okay, second question is, do we have any guidelines for street closures for these events? It used to be we'd get one or two per meeting, now we get three or four per meeting, and they're all good, worthy events. I don't question the, the worthwhileness of it, but the impact on our citizens needs to be considered. We need to make sure that our adequate signage is for alternate routes to get around.
The answer is yes. We just did the new ordinance on, on special events.
But it does include that?
Notice provisions, yes.
And not only notice, but signage on alternate routes?
There's certain, there, there's a city services group that work on the traffic control, there's a traffic control plan on each of the, each of the.
It's, it's the, the impact on our citizens I'm concerned about, because no matter how worthwhile these are, there are some negative impacts in terms of traffic flow.
Yeah, there, there are trade-offs with those, there's no doubt about that. Bob, can you answer Councilman Ryan's question? Do we require subdivision bonds on all subdivisions, or only subdivisions that have public improvements?
Um, we don't require them at all, because then a developer can put the improvements in prior to getting the plat accepted, so they do the, the, the work, public works inspects it, and then we accept it without any kind of bonding.
So if, if they want to start building on it before the public improvements are in, then we require the bond?
Right. The, the reason for the bonds is gives them the ability to start selling lots, but it, but we do have several that don't do it that way. They do it and put the improvements in.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Pete, we skipped over item eight A three at your request. This is a, eight A two by mistake. At, this is a zoning case in Ward four, sixty-four fourteen Southeastern Avenue. It's currently an I-two moderate industrial district. It would become a new pud, and we have one person that signed up to speak.
Um, yes, I apologize for being late today. I got up not feeling very well, and I appreciate you holding the case. The reason I wanted to hold it was if there were protests, I wanted to be able to address that. Is the person that signed up, the applicant?
It's on behalf of the applicant, yes.
I don't have a problem with it, and if there aren't any, again, I apologize for keeping you here. Of course, I have to stay here almost every Tuesday, a lot longer than.
Ben Kirk, two oh one Robert S. Kerr, Suite seven ten, on behalf of the applicant. I only hear Mr. Mayor and council members if there are questions regarding the applicant.
Okay, doesn't sound like there are any.
No, we had, we, we've had, I've had some discussions with the applicant about what they're going to do, and they understand the new rules with regard to this kind of facility. I think they're located in an area that's surrounded by other industrial uses, and I'm, I'm going to move approval.
All right. Comments or questions then on this item? It's item eight A two. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked Mark Clannenberg to come this morning and give us a presentation on, on terminal expansion plans at Will Rogers Airport. Probably thinking, terminal expansion? That's kind of pretty nice terminal. Didn't we just finish that? And, and the fact of the matter is that we, we began construction on it in oh one, so it's been thirteen years ago since we began the terminal expansion. Took a few years to, to accomplishment, but one of the key things that has changed since then is this was designed before nine eleven, and so we've accommodated the security and the check baggage claims and such. The fact of the matter, the actual facility was, was designed before that, and so there's substantive changes or requirements by the federal government in regard to that. The other thing is the limitation of gates. Mark's going to go, doesn't want to take his whole presentation here, but there are only two gates available at this point for future expansion, and we're adding flights. We just added a flight to, to Charlotte, was that announced this week or last week? Very recently, anyway, and we only have two gates, and one of those is limited on the size of aircraft that can go into that gate. So we don't have a lot of expansion, and we may not need to do this today, but we need to start planning for, you know, for future flights as, as we go forward. So with that, Mark?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Couch, and good morning, Mayor, and council members. As Oklahoma City continues to grow, and in particular, as the business community continues to develop, and as the boarding passenger numbers at Will Rogers continues to increase, it's important that Will Rogers World Airport constructs facilities to meet the future demand for air service. Some things I want to cover with you this morning are some background on the last terminal renovation, and also discuss current airport activity. We'll talk about some current challenges that we're facing, and, and also the proposed solution. We'll visit about implementation and some first steps that we're planning, and also the financial plan analysis. In nineteen ninety-eight, a terminal planning was done that preceded the last terminal renovation that included Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One included some roadway improvements and the construction of the ground transportation area, and Phase Two was an overhaul of the central terminal, the, the demolishing of the old concourse B and C, and the construction of the west concourse that we have today. And while the terminal project expanded the footprint, in other words, we expanded a lot of square footage, the central terminal actually doubled in square footage, and we expanded areas that were functional, such as the baggage claim area, gate hold areas, and of course, the concourse, but the key here is that we only added one extra gate, so it didn't measurably address capacity from an airline gate standpoint. We also looked at a Phase Three, which would be contemplating an expansion to the east, in other words, an east concourse that would mirror the west concourse, and we know since two thousand and six, the growth of the community and airport has continued. In two thousand and eleven, we validated the Phase Three plans by doing a terminal update plan, which again evaluated the terminal expansion and also looked at a central security checkpoint and some cargo options. We have five mainline carriers that operate out of Will Rogers and one ultra-low fare carrier, Allegiant, which started last November. As Mr. Couch mentioned, we're working in a complex that was designed over fifteen years ago before nine eleven, and it's not just TSA that has come into our, our airport now, but the airline industry has changed dramatically, and this all affects how the functions of the airport operate and the circulation of the passengers. We have about twelve thousand travelers per day, and we estimate about two thousand meters and greeters and other people that do business at the airport, and we know that the trend is continuing for new and enhanced air service. So as our business environment continues to flourish, we need to be able to meet the growing demands of air service to support economic development and also tourism. We've got seventeen gates at Will Rogers, and eighty-eight percent of those gates are committed. If you look at the two remaining gates that we have, you see the west concourse and, and the circle that's on the, the, the top of the concourse, which is the north, that's a limited restricted gate. It's only got enough room for a regional jet, so again, it can only accommodate certain types of aircraft. Now, we do have one open gate remaining, gate number twelve, which is a full mainline gate, which would be similar to a Boeing seven thirty-seven or an MD eighty. I want to point out the red airplane that's on the west end of the concourse, that's an airport gate, and we reserve that for airport purposes. We have a lot of mechanical and medical and weather diverts for the primary divert airport for Dallas-Fort Worth International Airport, and, and they use that gate a lot. We also have a lot of charters throughout the year, and sometimes throughout the day, that use that gate, so that's a very much a utility gate for the airport. Our inflamments have been growing, and the airlines have responded, so in two thousand and thirteen, we had three air service announcements. United announced service to Cleveland. Southwest, through its affiliate Airtran, began service to Atlanta, and most recently, Allegiant with Orlando Sanford. We average now about one point eight five million boarding passengers a year, which translates to about three point seven million passengers a year using our airport. Our boarding passengers are estimated to increase at a rate of one point six percent a year. That's been historic over the last ten years, and that's typically what we have forecasted in our master plan going forward. Now, if you look at the graph, we've had a couple of downturns. In nine eleven, clearly, passenger numbers dropped off, but they have rebounded, and then in two thousand and eight, because of the hundred and fifty-dollar barrel oil prices, which dramatically impacted the airlines, followed by the two-year recession, we also had a downturn then, but each time, we rebound to a point where we get back on that one per, one point six percent growth rate. This is a snapshot in time admittedly, but what it shows is unlike a lot of airports, that the airlines are very bullish on Oklahoma City, and they have increased capacity. Increased capacity can be new air service, it can be an added frequency, or in other words, the number of times an airline will fly to a particular destination, or it can be an upgauging of aircraft, say, from a fifty-seat regional jet to a ninety-seat regional jet. So you see several cities here that have had downturns and have not quite come up to, to their breakeven, but yet Oklahoma City and Louisville are doing very well. These are potential air service announcements that could impact our facilities, and, and this is what I call low-hanging fruit, and I think that was evidenced with the announcement recently of our conversations over the last two years with U.S. Airways in trying to secure Charlotte, North Carolina. The existing carriers on the left, we talk to on a regular basis, as well as the new carriers. Karen Carney, who manages our, excuse me, our program, goes to at least two conferences a year, and we also have targeted presentations to airlines throughout the year, too. Sometimes it takes two or three years to cultivate a route. Excuse me. Here's the main takeaway that I, I, I'm going to leave you with, that without facility expansion, we're going to risk discouraging that future airline growth in the market and ultimately cat, customer satisfaction from the business community and our citizens who are craving more air service. Talking about some efficient inefficiencies that we have, we know our checkpoints are constrained. They, they were put in after nine eleven and after the facility had been designed, and we know that there are, there is significant congestion at both the entry points and the exit points of both of our checkpoints. Our checkpoint queuing goes into the lobby, and in the morning, if you've left early, you see the lines that go out the checkpoint, they run into the meters and greeters, they run into other ticket lines, and there's just not enough space. And at the checkpoints, we have other problems because the recomposure place where passengers put on their shoes and get their laptops back in their bags, although we have designated seating, there's not enough room there. TSA has implemented their pre-check program, and by all estimations, it looks like that's a program that's really going to be for the long term. However, there's other programs that TSA particularly will come and mandate that we have to begin, and with our checkpoints only having two, and only having three lanes, and not enough room to even put the whole-body imagers in, such as the, they, they came out a couple of years ago, that, that creates a lot of constraints on us, so we have to eliminate those inefficiencies. This is kind of a busy graph, but I'll, I'll walk you through it. The, the time of day is the twenty-four-hour clock at the bottom, and on the left side, you see the hourly rate of departing seats. These are the seats on all, all of the carriers that we have throughout the day. And, and in two thousand and eight, between the critical time of four thirty and six thirty, we had about nine hundred and thirty-one available seats on carriers. In two thousand and twelve, that jumped out to twelve hundred and seventy-seven, and then in two thousand and thirteen, last year, it dropped off a little bit, but that's really not a negative. Southwest Airlines moved at least one airplane and maybe two to a different time of day block, but what you see in this graph is that you see that we're getting more peaks throughout the day, and they're more consistent. the day, and they're more consistent. Other challenges that we have, there's not enough adequate meter and greeter space. You know that meters and greeters typically congregate around the west checkpoint at the escalator area. There's no places for them to sit. We've got a cargo building that is very old. It's vintage 1960s, and this is another major takeaway. If we don't eliminate that barrier, it will prevent us from expanding. I just can't throw another jet bridge out in the east end of the building. We have several operations that we need functionally to improve. The cargo annex is where airport operations has been for years. I need to get them back into the terminal building. Our food and beverage and concession support is also in the cargo building. The military welcome center that the YMCA hosts is in the cargo building, and we'd like to get them into the terminal building. And our airport police unit is still in the basement. We need to bring them up to at least the ticket counter level. Many of you are familiar with the problems we've had over parking garage A, elevator and escalator. This is Station 2, which is basically the elevator from the short-term parking and the rental car areas where the rental cars are today continually breaks down, and we want to redo that area. And there's not enough space for our tenants. Our tenants are asking for space. TSA has about 5,000 square feet that they office on South MacArthur, and they've expressed a desire to come into the terminal. And we've had other tenants ask for space, and our own administration staff is out of space. Again, not just the cargo facility, but we've got other things we have that are barriers. We have some cargo tenants that need to be relocated. We've got the tritaurator facility, which is where the airlines take their lavatory carts to dump the waste. We have glycol storage and dispensing equipment, also ground service equipment. All of that needs to be relocated in order to build a east concourse, as well as a whole host of utilities that need to be relocated or rerouted. Here's a top view of the existing site, as you see. So it's kind of a good view where you see the existing terminal, and we need to expand that out to the east. You see the cargo building, how long it is, and you can see what an impact that's going to be to the new construction. And then the cargo annex building, we show you also. This will be a future demolition. We think we can use that from a utility perspective in the short term. Here's the three-bay expansion that we're proposing. This would be Phase 1. And a bay represents the distance between two stone columns that you are familiar with in the terminal. And in a later slide, I'll talk about what functional areas we improve with this three-bay I want to talk about our existing checkpoints. Here you see them outlined in red. The east checkpoint is the one to the right. This one is actually hard to find, and we do have a lot of visitors that come through Will Rogers World Airport. And as much as we've tried to sign it and sign it well, we still have problems with travelers finding this checkpoint because it's basically hidden from the lobby. It doesn't feed very well. From the document checker to the TSA screening machines, there's only three or four people that can feed into that area. Yet this is the bigger checkpoint that holds two of the TSA's whole-body imagers, which they would like people to use those facilities more than the metal detectors. We have the west checkpoint, which is the red area on the left. And as you know, everything in the terminal happens right there. You've got the meters and greeters there by the escalator. You've got the queue line that goes even further into the blue lobby than what you see there. We've got, it's where the exit lane is, so most people exit the concourse there. And you have Southwest Airlines on the other side of that checkpoint, which Southwest still carries the majority of our passengers. What we're proposing is a single enlarged security checkpoint. It'll be an eight-lane checkpoint. It will have a much larger queuing area. It'll be easy to find, and the queuing area actually will handle more people than the east and west checkpoint do today. It'll have a larger customer-friendly recomposure area. And I want to talk about the additional seating and greeting area. You'll see that the west checkpoint, we want to turn that into a meter and greeter lounge with amenities, even possibly concession, so that our meters and greeters will have a place to sit, and they'll have tables and chairs and an opportunity to watch their family and friends come through a plexiglass, for instance. Phase 2 would be a three-gate concourse expansion with international processing capability. We want to have international service again back to Mexico for sure and possibly the Caribbean. The idea here is one of the gates would be an extra-large gate that would handle wide-bodied aircraft, and we would build the facility so that we could eventually, hopefully, attract customs in the future for immigration processing. And then you see the six-gate expansion to the east that would also be designed. Here's the remainder of the gates that would eventually be built, and so you're looking at a total of nine gates. We would have a total of 26 gates for Will Rogers World Airport, and that would see us into the future. The six-gate expansion would certainly be based on demand. This is just another view that gives you a good reference of the three-bay expansion and the Phase 2 three-gate concourse. And you can see how much the cargo building interferes with both of those expansions. And also, next, you'll see how the airplanes line up. And again, you see how that cargo building affects us. Karen, you can go to the next one fairly rapidly. And there's the six-gate future, and then the airplanes that are around that. The three-bay expansion gives us a lot of functional capabilities. Level 1 being the baggage claim level. You can see we increase a lot of square footages that are bolded in the slide that are regarded to public circulation, baggage claim, baggage makeup. Here you have the military welcome center, concession support and airport operations, and also a customs facility, 15,300 feet where we're going to build a shell for customs. Level 2, which is the ticket counter level, again, a lot of circulation space for the public, a lot of mechanical, electrical and plumbing space, and also additional concessions. And then Level 3, we're talking about the administration space for airport staff and then future tenants and hopefully TSA. Our cargo relocation, we looked at some options, and what we're going to do is entertain the first two. The first one is to expand the use of the private cargo operator, which is Arrow Term. And I'll talk about that in the next slide. And we're also going to utilize, as I mentioned before, the cargo annex temporarily. We can move some operations out there before we move them into the terminal building. We don't believe that there's a benefit to building a new cargo facility. Cargo operations over the years have changed dramatically, and about, there's only one or two airlines that are even carrying freight right now, and that is restricted just to mail. And the advent of smaller regional jets is one aspect of why that is. Arrow Term, we have a lease today, and we're negotiating a new lease right now. Both of those have the capability for them to expand their facility 25,000 square feet to the south end. They have been waiting for us to pull the trigger on this, and we've had conversations over the years, and they feel that they can accommodate any tenants that may need to be relocated out of the cargo building into the private cargo operator facility. So here's the critical next steps for us. We're in the process of determining a solicitation for an A&E to design the facilities and also address the utilities relocation and the cargo operation demolition. Our schedule, four to six months to select an A&E team. We'll probably have 12 to 16 months for design, and the reason for that is we'll have a lot of stakeholder meetings with tenants and users. When we did our terminal update plan in 2011, that took a lot of time, so I think it's going to be a little bit longer than a normal design. And then we're anticipating 24 months of construction. We have some growth-related projects that are already in progress. Mr. Couch mentioned the new checked baggage inspection system, which construction on that will be starting in the next couple of months. We're restriping the lines for the aircraft parking positions at the west concourse. This is to buy us time and also to allow us to handle larger aircraft. The new consolidated rental car facility, construction began December of 2013 and is estimated to be complete in the first quarter of 2015. We are also going to reclaim some rental car spaces for public parking. And when the consolidated rental car facility is done, those counters will move out to the new facility. That will open up even more space for baggage claim and create some office potential. We're underway with the terminal and roadway signage project. This is a complete overhaul of the signage on the airport, not just the terminal building, but the parking garages and also the roadways into the terminal. And we also have a tunnel repairs and enhancement project, which is out for bid right now. The new project will also provide some additional terminal improvements besides the enlarged checkpoint and the parking garage elevator and escalator vestibule renovation. We're also going to be looking at some electrical and HVAC systems, which are vintage 1960s. These are, excuse me, systems that were not done in the previous renovation. We're going to be establishing a departmental command center, which is sort of an emergency operations center, some people call it. And I mentioned the tritaurator, the glycol equipment and the ground service equipment that we need to relocate. One of the other key projects for us is the terminal generator. We're in design now to establish a generator or two generators that will provide us 100% functional capability in case of commercial power outages. That will extend to the pedestrian tunnel. The garages already have their generators. Looking at the preliminary project costs, you see the major categories on the left and the corresponding amounts that we're estimating for those categories. So we're looking at a project of a little over $70 million. And most of that is heavily infrastructure-loaded. In the preliminary plan of finance on the left, you see the major categories of projects and the amounts, and these are the revenue sources we'll be getting. This was consistent with the last renovation. We get a lot of money from the Federal Aviation Administration with the Airport Improvement Program grants. We're anticipating over $12 million from that program. And those projects, this project, will be funded at 90%. So the federal government gives you 90%. The sponsor matched by the trust is 10%. We'll be financing this with bonds, and it'll be paid for by passenger facility charges as well. Almost $40 million approves a 70% eligibility, and that's likely to go up. There's a lot of talk in Congress and the FAA about having more eligibility for projects. What that means is passenger facility charges are being used to pay for capital projects for anything related to the movement of bags and passengers. And then finally, the junior lien bonds will be paid by airport revenues. And again, this goes to the leverage that we have by only paying a little over $18 million of airport revenues, which is from ongoing operations and the amount of money that we get dedicated for financing through the PFC revenues. Our bond assumption analysis would be that these would be junior lien bonds issued in fiscal year 2018, could be calendar year 2017. 30-year bonds, level annual debt service, and the debt service, again, would be paid by airport revenues and passenger facility charges. Looking at the junior lien debt service of the trust at this time, and this is after the consolidated rental car facility was built, you can see that we're paying right now about $12 million a year in level debt service. And in 2023, you can see that there's a significant amount of debt service that falls off. After you factor in the terminal project, you can see for a few years, it goes up between $14 and $16 million a year. But because of the 2023 drop-off in debt service, then all of a sudden, even after the terminal project is factored into the debt service, we're a little over $10 million, which is $2 million less than what we're paying today. It's important to look at the revenue categories that are going to pay for this debt service. And I mentioned how much leverage we get from the airport revenues to pay for our debt service. So you can see the revenues are only going to be somewhere shy of $4 million, a little bit more of $4 million until 2023, and then in 2028, it goes even dramatically down. You have the PFCs, the passenger facility charges I was talking about, which is also still paying for some of the last renovation. We have a lot of those, that's going to be dedicated debt that will pay for the remainder of this debt service. And then on top of that, the yellow is the customer facility charges that's related to the debt, to the consolidated rental car facility. Again, another picture that shows you what the debt service is payable from airport revenues. And so it just highlights, again, when you think about the previous slide, how much dedicated funding we have from the PFCs and the CFCs that are obligated for the majority of our debt. We also have revenue opportunities. Karen, if you'll go back, excuse me. We also have revenue opportunities. It's not just about debt service. So we're going to be getting incremental revenue from the airlines when they lease the additional gate space. We're hoping for the TSA rental income, and we'll have definite income from concession So in summary, we're 88% committed. We need to move. With the continued growth of employments, and it's anticipated that airlines, both current and new entrants, are going to expand in Oklahoma City, we're not going to be able to accommodate them unless we build onto our facility. We mentioned our checkpoints and the inefficiencies, several functions that need to be relocated, and lots of barriers that we need to eliminate before adding a single gate. Talked about parking garage A or Station 2 that needs to be redone and the office space limitations that we have. The airport generates a very diverse revenue stream. Lots of airports, commercial airports, are dependent upon airline revenues, and in some cases, even one airline revenue. However, our revenues from airlines only represents about 15% of our operating revenue. So we're in very, very good shape. A portion of the future debt related to the expansion would be charged to the airlines, and it's included in their rate base. We did this in the last renovation, very successful with the airlines' negotiations. And we came up with a good blended rate, and we would do this for the new expansion. And also a reminder that the future debt would also be paid from non-airline revenues, such as the parking revenues, concession revenues and other rental car revenues. That's my presentation today. The key is, we need to start today. The earliest that we'd probably see construction would be 2017.
Mark, those customer facility charges, how are those determined? Are they, is there a standard in the industry, and how do ours compare to other airports?
They are standard in the industry, and there's very different various rates. We determined ours to be $4.50, which would construct the facility that we're building now. And that's on a transaction-day basis, and that customer facility charge is already in effect. We have been collecting those for a year, year and a half, Kim, since July of 2013, excuse me.
We were collecting them longer than that. We raised them to that rate at that point in time.
Pardon me, sir?
We raised them to that rate at that point in time, right?
That was the passenger facility charge that we raised. The customer facility charge, we started off at $4.50.
Okay. The debt financing that we're using, is that also typical of other airports and how they've been constructed, or is this something unique to us?
No, this is typical.
Are there other revenue streams out there that other airports are using that we're not?
Not that I'm familiar with. It's typically from grants and typically from PFCs. And there has been a move in Congress because the $4.50 rate, that is the maximum that you can charge for a passenger facility charge. Airports across the country are advocating that be raised to seven or even higher because the construction dollars have exploded over the last 15, 20 years, and the PFC really doesn't account for the inflation of that.
Other questions? Yeah, Pat and then Meg.
Mark, on your security gates, security entrance points, do you have a target in mind for the maximum wait time for a passenger to go through there?
Certainly, no more than 20 minutes is what we have found historically is, I think that's what TSA tries to strive for, no longer than 20 minutes. When the whole-body imagers, the AIT machines, were installed by TSA a year or so ago, they wanted 80% of the people to go through the AITS, and they weren't using the metal detectors. And that got our wait times up to nearly an hour, and there were a lot of passengers that were even moving flights, losing flights or missing flights. And so we worked with the TSA to find ways that we could get that number back down. We don't even like 20 minutes, and that's one of the reasons why we need the central security checkpoint. With a central security checkpoint, TSA can operate more efficiently and staff it up a lot quicker when everybody is right there in one location. We also have a third checkpoint now that I didn't mention. Because of Pre-Check, we are using the auxiliary checkpoint that we used in the last renovation. If you've flown recently and been authorized to go through the Pre-Check lane, you're going down a gray hallway into another checkpoint. We actually have three checkpoints for an airport the size of Will Rogers.
Couple of things on that, Mr. Ryan. One is that although if people complain about the long lines out there, they complain to the airport about it, Mark actually has very limited control over TSA, who actually runs them. He's got a great relationship with them, and they try to, you know, address our concerns, but Mark doesn't have direct control over the TSA checkpoint processes. The other thing is that we have really strong peaks and valleys on process. We've got an early morning peak that's very high, and then it drops off. And TSA accommodates that, but those peaks and valleys are dramatic, or other airlines maybe have more of a uniform flights throughout the day. We really don't.
We have actually two waves of departures from every gate at Will Rogers before we even accept any arrivals in. And when I was talking about the limitations on the checkpoints going to the east checkpoint, TSA, because of staffing issues that they have internally, sometimes it will close that east checkpoint, and it's unscheduled closing. We don't know when it's open. We don't know when it's closed, and therefore, our public doesn't know that either, and that's not the right way to do business.
Mark, will there be an opportunity for concessions outside the security area?
We're hoping. Right now, we have such limited space in the lobby, even though the last renovation pushed the building out to the north 30 feet. It really, you know, we have that one pre-security concession, and it's just tough. There aren't a lot of people that use it, unfortunately, and so it's very tough to make it work and make it profitable for the concessionaire. I think when the west checkpoint is turned into a meter greeter lounge, that will create more opportunities. We will certainly not, will continue to have the pre-security checkpoint that we have today. That creates another concession opportunity.
All right. Pete?
I do have a question, Mark, but before I ask it, I want to tell you how much I personally appreciate the transparency that the airport trust and the way you operate that. I was here at another time when it wasn't as open and transparent as it is now, and you guys really do a good job, and I personally appreciate it just from the standpoint of being a councilman, trying to evaluate what goes on. It's really good to see the kind of transparency that you brought to the table, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
There's a question that maybe this is a dumb question, but it's always been my impression there were substantial oil and gas revenues that came to the airport, and they're not mentioned anywhere in this. Is that because you don't use them for financing, or have they dropped off?
No, we still have some oil and gas revenues. At one time, we had 52 operating oil and gas wells on the airport, and I'm not sure where the count is now. I don't think it's much less than that. We used to get $12 or $13 million a year in oil and gas, and it's dropped off now, right? right?
Actually researched it, it was about $6.5 million and about $80.
Okay, $6.5 million, and now we get about $2, $2.5 million the last few years. You see those numbers when we do our budget presentation each year, we talk about the oil and gas, and so you're probably.
Well, I just didn't notice when you talked about other revenues, I didn't see oil and gas there, and I thought.
Actually, we use the oil and gas revenues as revenue for our matching grants, and so it's been very, very beneficial over historically.
But it didn't differentiate it such, because it goes into the fund balance for the airport as part of those revenues that come from oil and gas, and they're using that fund balance to provide some of the matching.
I just didn't see when we talked.
So they didn't dedicate those, because it's just part of the overall revenue streams that the airport has.
Do other airports or airport facilities or airport management operations around the country operate like ours does with a separate governing body like our trust has?
Most of them do. There are some that are more independent authorities. We're sort of a hybrid, we're a city airport, but we have the trust that has equitable title to the land facilities and the exclusive management of the airport, but we do operate concurrently with city staff.
Right. At the risk of asking a question you're not going to be comfortable to answer, is the system you have, we have in place, one that you would recommend of another city?
This ain't broke, I wouldn't change it. So, yeah, I'm completely happy with the way our system is today.
Well, it was a long time coming to get it the way it is now. It became part of that enterprise idea that we started to operate each entity as an enterprise, and the water trust is that way, and the airport were the two big significant.
And that changed a lot in the 1980s when the FAA had different rules on how they treated airport revenues, and that was, again, a catalyst for the enterprise fund being created.
But you don't find this hybrid system, as you call it, to be unwieldy or difficult to operate?
No, not at all, not at all. I have great communication with the trustees before meetings, and those are great talks, and the business at the trust is conducted almost not eventful because of that, so it's working very well, in my opinion.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
As I think you all know, that the format of the trust changed a few years ago when we were able to do that because some of the bonds rolled off, and we expanded the trust to a five-member trust, includes two members of council on the trust.
That was very important to us, because in some cases, we didn't feel like the airport story, which is a great story, was not being told as much, so when we went to five, it gave me an opportunity with the extra council representation to have more influence.
Well, you know, at the time, we made the earlier changes, there was a lot of pushback about why would we do it that way, and it seemed to me that the reason to do it that way is to get the kind of transparency we have now, and that's why I was asking if the change from a two, kind of a closed trust with two members to a five-member trust with public and private, both people in the trust, is unwieldy for you?
No, it's very good, because we not only have city representation, but I feel like we have business expertise on the trust as well, which is important for a business operations environment.
Meg?
Mark, I just have one other frequent user question, and that is, could you share with us the improvements that you're making to the tunnel?
We are, we have gone through a significant process with C.H. Guernsey, who has also got funnel design on the team. We're looking at some aesthetic improvements to the tunnel. We know it's very long, it goes all the way to the second five-story parking garage, and it's very gray and very bland, so we're planning to dress that up in a big way, and that will also, one of the other issues that we have to do before the tunnel enhancement project is we have a water intrusion project, which is creating some mold issues and things, and we're addressing, I know where you're headed, we're going to take care of that, too.
Ed, can you walk through how you would choose contractors, or what, how that process goes for the, I guess it's $70 million of construction, or is there a preference for local contractors? Is there?
No, we use the city process, we work with the Public Works Department and go through the standard A&E process that all city projects do.
Contractors are pre-qualified here, then it'd be the lowest.
Okay, it's same, regular public works process?
Yes, sir.
The difference on this project is there will probably be a substantial team that A&E firms will team up with, because there's a lot of disciplines in a terminal project that have to be looked at, like concessions and other things.
On the design profession?
Yes, sir.
Other comments or questions for Mark? Mark, we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Do you have a report on this interim financial report?
Right, behalf of, answer any questions the council may have?
No, I'll be anxious to see the, I guess it's the January check, will we get that here Friday?
Yeah.
Some advanced numbers at least?
We anticipate, isn't it, probably Friday?
All right. Any other comments or questions for the city manager reports? All right, citizens to be heard. All right, no one has signed up, we don't have executive session, we're ready to adjourn. We're adjourned.